I'd like to call the regular meeting of Columbia Board of Selectment and Order on Tuesday, September 21st, year 2021. First order of business, let me read the rules here, conducting a hybrid virtual meeting. This meeting will be held both in person and virtual. The session is being both video and audio recorded. Board members and staff who are joining virtually will remain unmute except when speaking or voting, and will generally be keeping a video of themselves on throughout the meeting. If a member of the public joins virtually and creates an audio or video disruption, they will be manually ejected from the meeting upon recommendation of staff for the first election. Republican, a day before, public input at ColumbiaCT.org. If attending virtually, public comments during the meeting can be submitted through the chat feature. In or wave your hand and request your mic be unmuted. Any way you speak, in person or online, please include both methods, your name and address. I ask you to ride for the pledge allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
By the right room, depends what are you here for? The woodland terrorists, sure, good.
And his agenda there as well.
Yep. Approval of the agenda, make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Although in favor, aye. Is Bill, Bill's on.
Oh, he's on.
Okay, thank you. I move to, I move to approve the Board of Selectment regular meeting minutes from September 14th, 2021. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
State your name, never mind. Audience of citizens not here, or what's here for, anybody other than which listed in the agenda? Very good, anybody in the chat? Those who, great, whole business. Who will the Sampson Oakham Memorial Garden flag? No discussion, move on. I moved to, well, I moved to approve the Sampson Oakham Memorial Garden flag and to move it forward onto Board of Ed approval, should it be approved by the Board of Selectment. In saying that, the discussion is, we have a beautiful sign, this is an actual replication. I mean, it's very nice, although, raises a concern. We've had requests of 18 by 20, 18 by 34, and people who are in favor of this exact size. So, discussion please, what are your thoughts? First of all, can you tell me how it's going to be placed there and?
No, right now, the sign that's there, from the department alumni, it really is about Sampson Oakham and we are, this is about Sampson Oakham and the garden. You know, he was into herbs, how he connected with, over Europe and got money for Dr. College. So, it's really about Sampson Oakham, so we felt we needed some interpretive information about. And Joan, you know, has created this. And we can, I was calling her today to see how big it was, what she was going to put it on. And she sent a picture of a sign that they have down at Lebanon Historic Society, and that she's modeling it after that. The material that they have, and that's of the some kind of dialogue.
Dialogue, it's a, yes.
Yeah, that's what she's doing.
Is it going inside or outside?
Outside, outside. I know, we, we can talk to her about how she's going to do it. And she's, she's got the wood, she's got all this other stuff, she just, it's to, you know, some kind of, I guess, to preserve it. Some plastic over it or something, or hard, maybe you know more.
I, I know, yeah, I do these all the time. Um, if she wants to contact me, I can help her. Okay. Because it's, I don't want to go in today. She wants to contact me, I can help her out, so.
We can negotiate the size, I mean, I don't think she's locked into a particular size.
What did she have?
She had about 18 by 34.
Well, this is too small.
Yeah, it's small.
And where would it be?
It would be near where the Oakham Garden is, where we're planting herbs. I mean, Justin and Maria Woodward and Kathy Tolster have been there, have been very busy with this. With the, and then COVID kind of slowed things down. But, but we put in herbs that he would have planted.
It's a four by four post on an angle.
Yes, then she wants to do it on a, on an angle.
I get it.
Just to make it easier to.
But one post, which means if it's too big, then you leave it.
No, you should, the two, one on each side.
No, there's one post.
I thought there was one, I saw.
Maybe she planned to put a second post.
Yeah, I think one on each side, and can keep it. But anyways, we can work on that, I think it's a great sign. And I, I also, I wanted to make sure the Mohegan people were aware of this and maybe would change some verbiage. And I, I just, they haven't got that to me, so I just, I sent a couple, you know, I did tea talks with Melissa. And she said, she gave me some other emails, she thought it was fine, but she couldn't make a final decision. So, we've done everything I could.
So, there's a question about wording, there's a question about size, there's a question about how it's going to be put into the garden. We just, really, all we have is we know where the garden is.
Right, and we can, then we can talk more about that. The verbiage, I think, is fine, I mean, I got, I sent.
We just asked for inputs.
I was asking for input from Mohegan people, and they, just to get back to me, and I tried like three, a couple times. And there, I know they're, I don't know, they're just very busy with stuff, and they have lots of times, don't get.
Is there a timetable that we have to have this in by?
Well, we wanted to do something. We wanted before we have, we wanted to have like some kind of celebration or something for the plaque that's there. So, let's say by next spring.
By next spring?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to withdraw my motion, I need more information, I'm all for this.
Okay, so what, tell me what you want.
I know, I need size, material, how it's going to be, foundation, cost.
Well, the cost, she said, was $52.
Okay, however, $52 sign doesn't give you.
This is not enough, we can get donations on that, so, yeah, we'll get you something a little upscale from.
Anybody else have any?
Well, can we approve the sign though, and then we'll kind of do the other stuff?
But you're going to go and talk to the.
No, I can't.
We approve the sign, and you go home, and you have an email from the Mohegans, and they say, we'd like to take a look at it.
Yeah, they just, I do not think they're going to.
This'll take a week to do.
Excuse me?
This will take a week to make, okay? And not saying that I would do it, but I can, yeah, a week, you have it in a week.
So, you approve the concept, it's just all this other stuff?
I would never keep you from putting a piece like this.
Very nice.
It's wonderful, I have no idea what it is, I, I, it's a sign, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to table this.
Can we, can we, um, but it's, you know, send it to the school, because that's what, I want to kind of move it along in the process.
The school?
Yeah, because it's their property, so they, the Board of Ed has to approve it too. They may want more information too.
I think they would, how can I send something that I'm not sure to them? Let's do it, we'll do it right, you know, we have our backing, we want more. I mean, when I go see a doctor, and they tell them about medicine, they go, well, I don't have enough information. Well, shame on me, I'm just, we need more, we'll get it done, okay? I think it's a great idea, we'll get it done, thank you. Next on the agenda, I move to set a public hearing on October 5th, 2021, at. Yeah, this is American Rescue Plan, 6:30 PM, in Yeoman's Hall, to present the first allocation of expenditures for the town's Plan, American Rescue Plan Act Distribution, and use the federal funding, for federal grant funds received by the town, and to hear the city's citizens of the town in regard to any appropriation which they are desirous, that the Board of recommend or reject, and to hear current board ideas. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay, so if there's.
You need to make it add, because you're long.
I just added it, I.
Oh, you're. Okay, with the last sentence you got. And to hear current board ideas. Right, so we'll, we'll have a quick sign at the end.
Thank you. Okay, new business, discussion of upper woodland terrorists, one, lower woodland terrorists, two. All right, thank you for coming or joining on, it has been brought to my attention, and I've heard it before, before I was sitting in this seat, that there has been years of, thankfully, it's not a lot.
Eighty, eighty years. When you say it's not a lot, it's eighty years, 1939.
Let me, can we, if I just finish, excellent. So, I don't know how many times a year, the emergency services have been called in, gone to the wrong place, or mail has been displaced, or people have gone to the wrong place and knocked on the door, but now I've been asked to do something about it, so this is why we're here to discuss this tonight. I, I will open the floor from parties that are here. So, but the first thing is, I've been asked to look at changing one or both of the names of the roads to make them distinct of each other. So, we have clarity in the addresses that reside in the area, okay? So, would anybody like to speak on it?
Yeah, I mean, I.
Sir, excuse me, I would ask you to state your name and address.
Oh, I'm Jerry Kraus, I live at five Upper Woodland Terrace, or five woodland terrace number one. There is no upper and lower, that's just what the residents made up. The official address is woodland terrace number one, and that's where I live. And about 20 to 25 years ago, I've been here 31 years. After five years of just going through all the things, Steve, that you mentioned of wrong addresses, wrong deliveries, wrong this, wrong that, mail, the shipments, you name it. So, I came to the town, and, and I asked them to remedy the situation, and they said, they had met and whatever, and the only thing that we can do is change the names to woodland terrace number one and woodland terrace number two. So, so they replaced the street signs, and that's what they reflect to this day. And that didn't change anything. It didn't stop it, it didn't slow it down, it didn't, it was just the same. And so, over the years, the residents that are affected start calling it upper woodland and lower woodland terrace to differentiate for delivery people and mailmen and the white to maybe better handle deliveries and whatever. And it's just, even that does not work. Now, since Steve, you and I talked a month ago, what, I've had multiple deliveries from the mail that belonged to the other address. I had on August 9th, a UPS shipment that was delivered to the other house, people that are rarely there, somehow or other, I, I never got the package. So, I ended up having to spend, buy it again, spend another hundred dollars, file a claim with UPS, went through 30 days, 40 days, you can imagine. And it's still not resolved, but we're close to it. They recognized the loss, and, but I'm still out a hundred bucks, right? So, this, and then, we had a house for sale here three months ago, the other number five. There must have been a dozen people, five, 10 people, whatever, that come to our house for an open real estate house. So, this is just recent. I can, and I don't want to belabor this for 31 years, but I, I assure you, I can tell you 31 years of tales that some of them are just wild. And it just, it, you can't have the same street with multiple numbers and think that everything's going to go smooth, it does not work.
Thank you.
That's my two cents.
Anybody else like to talk on?
Sure, John Billworth, eight, upper woodland terrace. I believe if you do Google it, that it does come up as upper and lower. I've actually had banks or some, I, I don't remember if it was a bank or my mortgage company, say, they're actually listed as upper woodland terrace. So, I mean, if we're going to change the name, maybe possibly, we do go with that, I don't know. Yeah, the, the numbers, I mean, they're, they're kind of unusual. I mean, there's history behind that, from what I understand, with Carl still, this Carl then, he could fill you in completely, sure. But, I think, I think a lot of people are concerned about having to change their address stuff, because it's a big deal. I know I retired last year, and just changing my emails, you know, a job in itself, and plus, it's tied to land records and, and so forth. I don't know, possibly, you know, I'd love to hear suggestions, how to remedy this. I mean, it's a little bit confusing. It does make some sense on the lower terrace, except when you get to Don's at the very end, it's, he goes from like six to nine, and then I'm eight, and then we have two number ones, you know? So, yeah, it's like, again, back to what I was saying about the Greers, they want to be number one. But, I don't know, possibly, if we could, you know, put a sign, you know, call it upper and lower woodland terrace, and then put a sign with the numbers, you know, below that, and, you know, directions with the numbers on them, maybe that would help somewhat. So, okay, just my two cents.
Anybody on, Tom, are you looking to say something?
Yeah, I would, like what John and Jerry said, I, I concur with, because I live between those two.
Look, address, please.
Seven woodland terrace, uh, upper woodland, seven A and seven upper woodland terrace, which is actually part of upper woodland terrace, and my property actually ends on lower woodland terrace, which creates another problem, because Amazon and UPS know where I am, FedEx sticks a package at another house. As John said, a lot of times, if you Google it, it comes, everything comes up, upper woodland terrace versus woodland terrace one, depending on what you do, even when I changed the address. I actually had a volunteer fireman come here last year to sell something on Facebook Marketplace, and he couldn't figure out where I lived. And he mentioned that, but I was told that when I moved here, there would be an issue by the fire owner with the naming, Jay Lambo, who lived here many years, so, as Jerry said, and they've been here a lot longer than I have, John, Jerry, you know, it's, it's just confusing for every, I mean, I understand that at the bottom, look up the street to wait till the trucks come by if they're delivering something, because nobody, they get to the fork in the road, and they don't know which way to go. Anyhow, it's just confusing.
Well, so, we've looked at this, I've asked Mark to ask what it would cost for homeowners to change it, if we change the street name.
I checked with the assessor and with the town clerk, they have a whole list down in the town clerk's office of many roads in Columbia over, over the decades that have been, names have been changed, and it stays as an index. So, the actual records, your deed, that wouldn't change, but there'd be a reference that would reference, let's just say, we change the name of woodland terrace lower to something else. It would reference woodland, woodland terrace lower is now, and it would give the new name.
I, I can, I can say, when I lived in Michigan, we bought a new house, new subdivision, and several months after we lived here, they changed the, the same thing, the house numbers. They didn't change the street, they changed the house number. And it was nothing, they didn't have to change deeds or anything. And I, I was thinking about that, and I thought, you know, when you look at a deed, the definition of property is not the address, that's only a post office address. The definition on the deed is, it'll say, starting at point north, 27 degrees, northwest, 80 feet, and that goes through the litany of the description of the property to identify the one, you know, where that is, and not the house address. So, I, I can't believe, having gone through it in Michigan, that there would be any expense other than the people having to call, you know, the newspaper and say, hey, when you send a bill, send it to, you know, Main Street instead of woodland terrace.
Everyone would have to do a change of address form on every credit card.
Mr. Quinlan, what, where is your, where is your driveway start, enter into your property? On the lower or upper?
It's actually on lower, my driveway's at the, at the, the bend in the road before number one, lower woodland terrace. So, I'm actually, if you were to take a left turn at the, at the fork and go down the hill, my driveway's right at the corner, so I'm actually on lower woodland terrace, on the road physically, but the address is seven upper woodland terrace. Because seven and seven A were one property at one time, and they went all the way up the road to upper woodland, or woodland terrace number one, which is what they call upper.
All right, so let me show you what I've been thinking of doing, is when I've been notified of this, and after looking into it. I'm inclined to keep the upper from the entrance of 87 all the way down to the Gate property. Dixon Wells maintained as woodland terrace. Starting at Mr. Quinlan's property, and at the fork in the road, because his driveway is on the, the lower end of woodland, lower. I'm inclined to change that name of that to make it separate, very distinctly separate. I will look into all that we have to do, I mean, has traffic authority can just vote on it now?
Um, excuse me, can you speak again?
Yes.
Um, as I was saying, I mean, it's upper and lower. Enough of a differentiation to, you know, for street names.
But it already isn't, but that doesn't work.
I'm going to tell you, I'm on Google right now. What?
It is, okay.
Upper is, upper is what we made up.
Yeah, it's one and two.
Yeah, no, I know I have, you know, I have done a search before, and it has come up that way.
Yeah.
So, and again, I've been, I've spoken to institutions before, my mortgage company, my bank, whatever, and I remember them saying, well, you have to say upper woodland terrace. So, I, I don't know. But anyway, you know, to me, that just seems like it'd make more sense, you know, upper and lower.
But it doesn't work, is the whole point.
Upper and lower doesn't work, I got a letter a week ago from the lower woodland terrace, and I get, I live on upper woodland. What we call upper, but it's really woodland terrace number one, you live on woodland terrace number one, not upper. Correct, and we, the residents did that to try to navigate around the problem of missed deliveries that at least the UPS guy, the FedEx guy would know upper woodland, because it's high, and you got to go downhill to lower.
Right.
And.
For, thank you, you, I can't open a floor to the discussion, okay? That comes through me. I see a couple other people who've joined, Mike Nazl, you have any discussion on this, any input?
Hi, yes, I'm here with my wife. We resonate with the upper and lower designation for the, the street names. It seemed to be working for us both logically and logistically. So, that's, that's, that's our opinion.
Unless the numbers don't work for lower.
Well, they would have, the numbers would have to be changed.
Right.
So, if we're changing the numbers, why wouldn't we change the street name?
You would need a new name, because upper lower is not differentiating enough to have identical numbers on both roads.
Would woodland terrace and just change, just woodland terrace and change the numbers, take out the one through nine, make it, you know, consecutive with the.
We can't go consecutive, because it goes from one to 34 on upper.
I mean, so, just make it one woodland terrace, though, instead of one and two. I mean, what does a post office say, because do they have issues with this too?
Yeah, they are, I mean, in the last two weeks, I got a couple pieces of mail from the other, from the other duplicate number. Now, maybe, maybe the regular mailman handles it, but you know, one day a week, you have a swing man. And it just, this is 30 years of this, that's only in the last month.
Okay, Rob, you have something?
You know, first of all, I say, Steve, what's the, what's our carhouse emergency people, what do they think of this?
Well, they have had trouble.
They're part of this issue also.
They, yes, they are, they had had trouble, and for volunteer firemen to go to this house to pick something up, and couldn't find it, I mean, that's.
That's a problem.
So, I think, everything's good until the ambulance has to go to your house, and they're not going to have somebody else to talk.
Right.
I know, and I've surveyed that area a number of times, it's, it's always been somewhat of confusion, you know, with streets which you're doing all your records and stuff, so.
Lisa?
It is an issue.
That's what a mess. It is really, I'm looking at the numbering, and it's really rather difficult, so, wow.
Bill O'Brien, any input?
My input is, is perhaps we, the name should be changed to have one be woodland terrace and one woodland street or something to that effect, why does it have to be a terrace?
I mean, if they like upper and, and lower, but I, the numbering is an issue.
Then you can't have the same numbers, you can't have two ones and two fives.
I would, I would renumber this, so that, I mean, if you're a driver, I can't imagine, because, you know, 90% of the streets, you have one side is, even one side is on, and you go down, and it's, it's negative, they're jumping all over the place, one is at the bottom of woodland terrace.
So, woodland terrace lower, if you renamed it and renumbered it, you could go one through nine, and it would all make sense back and forth on the road. If you try to renumber and fit woodland terrace into the number sequence of woodland terrace upper, it doesn't work.
Why, why?
Because upper goes from number one to number three to one.
Right.
So, what do you do, all of a sudden, start lower at 32? Or do you, where do you squeeze in lower?
I don't understand, you just start, so number, the one that's at 45 becomes one.
So, you'd have to renumber all of woodland terrace.
Yeah.
I, I would hate, well, I don't know. I mean, the, the difficulty I see is, you got a mortgage, you've got to now inform your mortgage that debt's changed, your credit cards, your bank, you need to get new checks, I mean, it's a lot of work, but all these people.
Whether you change the number of the house, or any denotion of the.
No doubt.
It's a change.
It's a change.
So, right now, if you just change woodland terrace lower to a new name, the only, only four people get new numbers. Because number two, number four, and number six, and number nine keep their number, you just get a new street name. Two, four, six, nine stay that. Seven becomes one, seven, eight becomes three, number one lower becomes five, and number five lower becomes seven. So, then you go one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, nine. So, it would make sense in lower. You would, but it has to have a different name.
Yes.
Or you're going to get lost in it.
Why, why did it get a different name?
That's the whole problem, Mike. People, I, I drive around there all the time thinking, where, this makes no sense. It makes sense to you if you've lived there 50 years.
Right.
Anyone driving in Cole, which is every van driver in the world right now, delivering pride, has no idea when they drive in there.
And FedEx.
And you, you need a big street sign that says, if you turn down woodland terrace lower, you're entering a different street. And you need a big street sign that says, if you turn down Woodland Terrace Lower, you're entering a different street. Because it still says Woodland Terrace, you have no idea why.
It's gonna be a circle.
Right, you figure it's a big loop and then I'll send you, you're dead ending, no matter which loop you chose.
Unless you, I mean, the only way is to have a big sign and that'd be kind of silly. You can have a big sign at the, at the fork saying, you know, this is this and this is that.
Like, Woodland Terrace One, we can leave it just the way it is. All, all those houses don't get affected, except number seven.
You're talking about up, upper Woodland Terrace?
Woodland can just stay. I would get rid of the number one. It should be just Woodland Terrace. Or make it Woodland Terrace Upper, but it can't have a number in it.
Well, upper is not official.
Right.
You could do a change if given it up.
I got a call from a woman who, her luggage, she didn't make, it didn't make the plane. They delivered it. She wanted it delivered to Woodland Terrace One, house number twenty-one. They delivered it to Woodland Terrace, house number one. So,
That one.
It didn't go to twenty-one, it went to one. So, that just happened.
Okay, thank you very much for your input.
I can understand the hesitation.
That is definitely difficult. I mean, how do the four people who have the number change on Woodland Terrace Two?
Okay. There is going to be a name change, it's going to be different. We're not gonna have any, we're not gonna have the same confusion. I'm gonna think about it.
Do you wanna get some recommendations for a street name?
They can put them in there, but I have a nice one, so. Gentleman who gave a lot to this town, a lot to the Lake area. So, but you can, you wanna submit names of the street for the lower?
Terrace Lower.
Then you can submit them, send them into the town administrator's office and we'll take a look at it, but it is going to be renamed.
And in your package, this was the assessor's recommendation for numbers.
Terrific. Permit, Link Permitting Services Software Services, what? We talked in your mark.
Yes, I'd like to talk about it.
Good. Go ahead, talk about before I was moved off.
Okay, so, if you'll notice, permitting activity in the Land use department has really gone up. We went from two thousand nineteen, twenty-four and fifteen permits to two thousand twenty-one, five hundred and eighty-four permits in a year, which increased the revenue from that department in fees, sixty-one thousand dollars. Now, what's come to light due to COVID is that people requested a way to submit requests for permits electronically from home through our website. There, we, we looked at two different competing companies, one used by Lebanon and Lebanon, I think it might have been Bolton, but it was too expensive. It was forty thousand dollars to set it up and then like twenty thousand a year to use it, or maybe twelve thousand a year to use it. But we looked at another one called Permit Link and I got a, a proposal on that and they just charge ten dollars per fee. So, minimum of four hundred permits have to be filed. So, four thousand dollars is the minimum cost per year to run this online system. I talked to our, our building official and we did a survey. A lot of towns, what they do is just up there permit fee charge a little bit to cover the software and to put us right in the middle, if you look at the chart, Colchester is twenty dollars per thousand, Norwich is seventeen thousand, Wyndham and Coventry are fifteen thousand, Bolton's fourteen and Lebanon Hebron is twelve. The recommendation was to go to the average of fifteen dollars a thousand. And that was more than pay for the software.
What are we charging now?
Twelve. Twelve dollars a thousand in value of your
What is, what, when you say for the permit, what does that mean?
So, permit, there's all kinds of permits.
I mean, I'm, I'm used to a lot more than fifty dollars on terms of
Per thousand.
Per thousand. So, so, single family home, swimming pools, renovations, roofs, stoves, fuel storage, solar, driveway aprons, demolition, those all require a permit.
Okay, so someone's building a hundred thousand dollar home, they're gonna charge fifteen dollars per thousand?
Times a hundred, right? Instead of twelve.
So, fifteen hundred dollars just in coming for
And how much is the cost for the system?
Four thousand.
Seems like you're overcharging. That sounds like we're making
I can see there.
I mean, I hear all kinds of people complain about, and that's just Columbia, the permitting fees are to their point of view, yeah. I want to discourage people from getting any permits.
I agree.
And Bolton charges fourteen, Lebanon Hebron, we are twelve. Wyndham Norwich, Colchester fifteen, seventeen.
So, does Hebron and Lebanon, so Lebanon has the same, a more expensive system and they're charging twelve and Hebron, do they have a system in, in one of these?
Lebanon's system doesn't charge per permit, it's a flat fee the town, town pays.
Okay, I understand, but they're only charging twelve and the Hebron is charging twelve. Do they have an online system?
I do not, I don't think Hebron has.
I mean, you just, if you make it easier, you're just going to, I think it's gonna pay for itself. If you make it easier, people are gonna be more inclined, oh, I have to go in, I have to do this. If they're like, oh, look, I'll just, you know, so maybe they weren't inclined to say they're putting in a, as recircusing their debt for a thousand dollars. But now it's only twelve bucks, I can do it online in my jammies. Sure, why not?
Well, you mentioned the sixty, that sounds like a good plus for us that that
Yeah, we're not hurting in fees, but that just goes right back into general fund, this revenue. So, it's not
I'm good with the fees where they are, actually.
We would then just have the budget for, or make sure because we don't have a way to, right now or they just take ten dollars out of every transaction.
I make a proposal that we authorize a town administrator entry into a contract with Point Software Inc. for Permit Link Software and we raise the permit to thirteen.
I was gonna say thirteen.
For a thousand.
And just so you know, I think I have to go to a town meeting because the fees are in ordinance. So, that would be starting the process, but it would require a town meeting. And I'm trying to make sure of that because I, I couldn't find the cost per thousand building fee in the ordinance.
So, I'm working with the town. I think I amend my motion. We would not take any reference of fee out of this. I'm gonna bring it with permalink, okay? Any discussion?
I think that's a good idea because it sounds like we're doing well with the fees right now.
Yeah.
And I think basically it's a way of saying, look, we've done really well with the fees and so we're gonna give you a new service based on the money that we got coming. Because years ago, we were getting hit because nobody was doing anything. Now, we're busy and we can afford to give you more service.
Okay.
I'm good with, I, I agree with that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, I'll just handle the contract and we'll worry about the fees.
And just reading through a little bit, just make sure we're always downloading everything because it's free to print PDFs of everything. So.
Appointments and reservations. So, Jacob Osborne, worked at the transfer station as an attendant and
He, he's got his apprenticeship, he's going on being electrician, so. I don't think we really need a motion because he's a part timer. I just wanted you to know that. Yeah, doing great. Town administrator report. I just want to mention one thing. I got a really nice phone call from Rachel Ninteaue. She wanted me to know how wonderful the senior center is, how much it means to her in her life. And she loves to go there for lunch, she loves all the activities there. And she said, Bernadette and the staff are, are just doing a perfect job. So, it was nice to get a nice phone call.
That's a big one.
Well, I don't know that. Eastern Howard Town District, the levels, luckily, our, our COVID activity has gone up a little. We're up to eleven in the last two weeks. What's that? Yeah, so they've been hitting the school in the town, but it's still not levels that I see as a big concern. It seems to be this variant is going through and seem to be catching some people.
So, I have a curiosity question. Do we have any data on, it says deaths on the age of people who are dying?
No. I just know, I remember a few of the deaths of people in their sixties and seventies.
Yeah, that's what I saw.
They don't
I don't know. Have you ever mentioned anything about the vaccine clinic?
Yeah, there's a vaccine clinic.
Vaccine clinic, court school.
Three vaccines.
Four thirty-two, seven, I believe.
What's that, tomorrow?
Tomorrow. Is it for a booster or just?
No.
Regular.
Unless you are, have a doctor's order for a booster or you're compromised in some way, they're not just giving that booster.
Um, do they, do we know what kind it is?
Yes, all three of them, Johnson, Johnson, Moderna and Pfizer.
Yeah, I haven't seen that anywhere. Can we post it anywhere? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I just haven't been on it.
So, if you do your email, you get a
Okay, it's good, mine, yeah.
It's on Facebook online, one the other.
Okay, great, yeah.
Ten two, collection from your postcard.
Yeah, it was just a, a nice note. Ingrid was very excited. We just got a whole postcard collection from the Lebanon Scorpio Society that they moved it over to our history place. So, that was nice and that's all I have to say.
Charter revision.
Okay, so, just as a follow-up, I checked with the town attorney. We are allowed to run another charter revision whenever we want, as long as the first one is complete. So, the one we're in will be completed the November election when we vote. If that passes and then the board, for whatever reason decides there's something else that needs fixing in the charter, we start another charter revision.
Could you use a targeted one or it was just this particular issue?
The board's selectmen could say, this is what we really want you to focus on, but once you create a charter commission, they can do what they see that's neat. You're opening up the charter. Let's just be one.
So, assuming you pick the same people, they focus on, they get done with it, I hope.
Well, the problem is picking the same people is we, we have to, we can't run into the same problem having too many elected people on the
Ah, yes.
Oh, that's right, too.
It's never simple.
Thank you. No transfers and refunds. I moved to approve refunds totaling one thousand one hundred seventy-six dollars and fifty-six cents. Respective of the list of course. All standard stuff. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Who would pay the bills? Well, we had one last week, so. I moved to pay bills in the amount of thirty-nine thousand five hundred eighteen dollars and eighty-one cents. Preserving twenty-one twenty-two regular credit card paycheck.
Oh, here they are. It's just, you all get them with us. Here you go. And one way I have those back again.
Any discussion? All those in favor paying the bills?
Aye.
Audience of citizens, this is your opportunity to say anything you'd like about anything in the meeting or if you got your mind.
I'm just going to chime in again about changing the name of the road. I think this might just not happen to people. I would try and maybe do a sign first, but again, just my two cents, you know, so. Yeah. I don't know if there's any other possible solution. Most of us, you know, we do get some wrong deliveries from time to time. I haven't really noticed being that big of a problem. For me, it's like, actually, they usually get my house, okay? But once in a while, I get somebody else's package and I just walk it down there. So, but that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Anyone else? Raise a hand.
At the end of the chat.
Good. Thank you. Board member comments? Rob, anything? Lisa?
Beautiful ball. Stunner, no.
Bill?
No.
All right. So, it seems to be the end of the agenda and of our business. I move to adjourn at seven forty-seven. All those in favor? Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Absolutely. This is one. It's kind of nice being